The following program is made possible by First State Bank. Offering secure online and mobile banking. First State Bank is ready to serve your financial needs with locations in Warren, Hermitage, and Hampton. First State Bank, the difference is leadership. Member FDIC, equal housing lender.
For approval, we got two sets of minutes, May 8th, 2023, regular monthly meeting, and a special call meeting of May 17th.
I move that the minutes for May 8th, 2023 be approved, as well as the special call meeting for May 17th.
Second.
Okay, I think Alderman Mosley might have beat you just barely. Motion and a second to approve both sets of minutes. Question? Yes, ma'am.
In the minutes, just for clarification, as it relates motions being made, for example, it states motion, are you saying that a motion was made?
Yeah, on where at?
Okay, if you'll just look under all of the word motions.
Oh, on a motion by Alderman Henderson?
Okay, okay. So you're saying that I moved that motion?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, but not that I made the terminology of "I" motion, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, all right, thank you.
Do you think that should be worded some different? That's the intention that you made the motion, yes?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
If that's the intent, but normally it is a motion was made by whomever the individual that actually makes the motion, and seconded by.
I got you, okay. We'll see if we can word that a little bit in the future. Okay, still do have the motion and second on the floor to approve both sets of minutes. Is there any other discussion? Or correction, or addition that anybody sees? Not all in favor of approval, show of hands. I see six in favor, so that's unanimous and approves our minutes. City clerk, you have several items there under your report, so you're recognized.
On the statement of revenue and expenditures and the administrative expenses, $206,757.77 for the law enforcement, with $609,721.60. Fire department was $188,177.69. Sanitation expenses, $446,432.61. Building house expenses were $11,549.99. District court was $37,342.22. Municipal building was $15,924.39. Recreation was $69,499.21. Cultural center was $4,261.13. The Armory Neighborhood Center was $13,37.9. Shitty range was $20,580.15. Expenses for Senior Citizen Center was $3,986.96. Other expenses was $2,903.42. Airport was $18,284.60. Economic development was $8,385.30. And street department was $954,170.
Okay, got you. That's the year today, correct?
Yes.
Now, the street department, I thought it was $211,000. Were you not looking at the wrong?
Did I mark them?
I think you marked the annual budget. The council members, you're looking at it, you see what I'm talking about. I was wondering how much money we'd already spent in that street department.
I'm so sorry.
That's okay, you gave the budget, no, it's what you did. It's $211,994.29 for the street department, two days.
Two days, I'm sorry.
Okay, that's okay. All right, and I think you've also got the cash balances, correct?
Yes, sir.
Got a copy of the cash balances, what we actually have in the bank, in each category. I would entertain a motion on the financial report.
Move that we approve the financial statement of revenue and expenditures as presented by Hart Coffee.
Second.
Motion seconded. Any question or discussion on the finances? Anything you want to ask or in comment? All in favor, show of hands. I see six in favor. Okay, continue. For the rest of the reports.
Okay, the city's taxes.
Yeah, sales taxes.
Okay, for the city's sales tax for May was $20,560.20. And for the county's sales tax was $62,105.25.
Y'all can see the past history of that, where it's up and down. It's really, it's up for 2023 by month, but it's down some from last year in the same month, so sometimes hard to figure on this, but at least y'all see what's coming in, what we have there, both on the city's sales tax and the city's portion of the county's sales tax. District court? You got their reports there? Does anybody have any questions or comments on any of the financial reports? Some of it, just for your information. It'd probably be appropriate at this point to just make sure everybody knows the district court has relocated officially out of this building, they are now over at the courthouse, Clerk's offices are there, and of course, the court's being held over there, so as far as I know, everything's going fairly well there. All right, under, anything else? Under mayor's report, I've got, it's a handwritten note there in your file, or in your packet, from Mr. Ball Ford, who served on our civil service commission for quite some time, probably are aware, he has moved to live with his daughter in Kentucky. So he has officially resigned, so we don't, I don't think there's any action we got to take, I just wanted to make y'all aware of it. Item two, Alderman Burks Fraser, do you have anything there you want to make a comment on or?
We are, since Mr. Ball left, we have a position to fill on the civil service commission, and we are currently looking into that.
All right, so no action?
No action.
Just reporting that. I wanted to just announce to the city council, I know y'all are still working on your committee, this is item three, that you're working on your committee through the Community and Economic Development Committee for the, whatever we'll call it, Community Development or Advisory Committee, whatever. I know that's still being worked on, but, and I know, I think all the council members have now submitted their two names. You're going to take that up in y'all's committee meeting tomorrow, so there's not anything to act on tonight. But I did want us just to go ahead and tell the council, since there's been discussion, that the mayor's office would be able to put one person on there, each council member two, that I'm going to recommend, when the time comes, Mr. Randall Ray to serve on that committee. Of course, most of y'all know him, he has a business in downtown Warren, and does have an interest and concern in this, so that, just to give you that for information. Now I'm going to ask if the city council would please vote to go into executive session just for a few moments. I need to update you on some personnel.
I make a motion to go into executive session.
Second.
Motion seconded, any question or discussion? All in favor, show of hands. I see six in favor, so if y'all would, I think you could.
I'd like to make the also second for personnel.
Oh, my bad. I retract it. I would add, motion, that we go into executive session for personnel matters.
Okay, got you. Okay, everybody feel good with their votes?
Yes.
Okay, all right, y'all would, just, we're going to go over the changes.
I move that they regroup in session, reconvene.
Second. Motion seconded, if we reconvene, any question, discussion? All in favor, show of hands. See six in favor, back in regular session. Brings us, oh.
Mayor.
I'm just going to say, there's no action to be taken by the council, it's just, got some reports on some personnel matters. Public comments? We have anybody signing in?
One, Willie Thomas.
Mr. Willie Thomas, you're going to speak, you're welcome to come up, if you'd like to, just come right on up here where they can hear you good. Yes, sir, you're recognized, speak to the council.
Okay, I have a problem about the, first of all, level 24 Street in Warren.
What's that address again?
Level 24. I have a problem with, when they clean up the limbs and stuff, I don't know what they got about us, or what, but, that church on the rounded curve, and across, what is that, Pennington Street, we got limbs.
Are you talking about St. John A.O. Church?
Was, can I ask a question, Mr. Thomas? Was this as a result, the limbs were a result, either the ice storm that we had back early in the year, or was this, I know there was some logging work that got down here, caused a bunch of some problems? Do you have any idea where the limbs came from?
Yeah, they cut them off the tree that was hanging over.
Was that the fire company that was doing that?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, and they're still there? Where they put them?
Right.
Okay, we've had some issues with that.
The logging, what you were saying, I'm not talking about those limbs, the white feet was cut down, or wherever it was cut off. And they haven't came back to clean them up.
Okay.
So, I want to know, do I want to take them and stack them up and burn them, or what?
Council, let me see if they got anything they want to ask you, first of all. I think we're going to have to get in touch with the fire companies, what we're going to have to do, because they're supposed to be cleaning those up. And we've had some very slow work on their behalf on picking a lot of these limbs up over the last few months, so I just, that's what I would recommend, that we'll just try to get with them, and somebody got to clean them up, they're supposed to do it.
Have you had any recent complaints, like his, that no one's come by to pick up their limbs?
I don't, I don't know, I'd have to check with Mr. Johnson on that, see if that's been called into us. We're talking about out on, near the St. John Church out there, says there's utility, you know, cutting work that they did, limbs down? Have we had, has anybody called us about that?
So no other complaints around town?
Well, yes, ma'am, we've had others, but the limb crew usually stays about two weeks behind the cutting crew, and then they'll send a file to come through and check. Now, I'm not going to say they didn't drop the ball, but.
You're talking about the utility cutting?
Yes, sir, utility, that, their trim crew comes in, then the cleanup crew comes in, then they send an inspector out to make sure everybody followed up.
Okay.
They do make mistakes, it happens. If we've had problems, I've been calling Jeff and Brandon at Energy, and they send a representative.
I suggest we need to do that, get that checked on. Is it just one stack, Mr. Thomas, or several?
There's several.
Okay.
Maybe that'll, that'll pod that.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Agreed.
The mayor office have received several calls regarding that.
Oh, we have? Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't know that. Well, we'll certainly follow up on that, and try to get something done.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else sign in? Council members, I need to ask y'all, have you had somebody, Alderman Henderson?
Brenda Jordan, that lives on Wright Street, contacted me, and I thought she was going to be here tonight. She is saying that there's high speeders on Wright Street, and they have children in that area, so she will probably touch bases with us, she was asking for a street bump to go on that street, and I told her she really need to really think about that, and to, you know, visit with the other neighbors. So she is not here, but I will get her confirmation and tell her what she needs to do.
Okay, thank you, Will. Anybody else, or is public comments? All right, see if we can move along here. Ms. Ray saying, committee reports, police chief?
Good evening.
Good evening. Little bit down, my monthly report in front of you. There are a few corrections that were just prepared last week, so there's a few changes in it. One, happened to an accident, we have a Friday, the second new vehicle has arrived at the dealership, we're in the process of getting it picked up, so that would be the two that we ordered this year, have both arrived. In the personnel issue, where we have, right now, I'm saying we're currently five officers short, we have a flight change on that also, when I did the last count before I came up this morning, we are budgeted for 15 officers, two CIBs, and 13 patrol. At the right now, we are about 13 capacity of staff, or on patrol, so we're only, we're going to say too short, but, you know, with 13 that we have, we're getting along pretty good. But now, two of the 13 are part-time certified officers, but they do work quite a few hours, they're basically volunteers to do, well, I'm not going to say volunteers, but at least three to four days a week. So that takes a lot of the pressure off the officer, that's been working a lot of the overtime while we were short of staff. So, long story short, our capacity is 15, we're at 13 in personnel right now, so we're looking a lot better than we did last month. And I can say that both the new vehicles are in, and we're in the process of getting them prepped, and getting them on the street, and getting them on patrol for us. Being looking a lot better for them than we were three days ago, so. Alderman Henderson in front of you, that hasn't been any change, or no significant equipment malfunction, things of that nature, and we're just shutting off.
Now, do you have any questions for the chief?
Well, he thought I was going to say something about his repairs, but it looks really good.
Thank you, thank you.
Alderman Henderson, I was kind of smiling when he was talking to me about this, too, and then he brought me the bill for that new police car, plus what it's going to take to equip it, and just for public information, it cost about $50,000 now to buy a new car and equip it.
But isn't it wonderful that we have?
Oh, it is, I'm all for it, I'm just saying, it's just amazing what it costs this day and time, so.
Do you know the year of your oldest vehicle in your fleet?
2017.
17.
Well, I take that back, we do have the oldest one would be a 2007, my old Impala, the black Impala, I'm keeping a lot, so, also be the 2007 black Impala. But as far as the white vehicles, the chargers, and the floor, the oldest one's a 2007.
Anybody else? Okay, chief, want you to hang around here a minute. Police committee, Alderman Burks Fraser, chairman?
Yes, sir, so we met to discuss several things. The first thing on your agenda is the dispatch pay study. We've got a copy that was given by Dr. Adam McKee from UAM of what he would do. We talked about the other morning, there's no specific request, dollar amount, thank you, dollar amount, but we talked about coming up with a dollar amount to offer, to see if that would interest him a little bit more, and then, so we just need to decide that we want to do this with Dr. McKee, or do we want to pursue another avenue? We talked about, Dr. Henderson, Ms. Alderman Henderson brought up, the last time UALR did a study, and they didn't charge, so what is your pleasure as a council? Do you want to go with the, see what Dr. McKee would do it for, or check into other avenues?
I think the mayor's already started working with him.
Well, I.
If we can get some additional information.
I'll tell you what I've done, of course, this is what he's kind of proposing to do, is what this basically is. I sent him an email today.
We don't have anything that has like the dollar amount, we just have.
No, 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 there's no dollar amount, you're correct about that, because when I contacted him, he said, well, y'all figure out what you feel is right.
We want it pro bono.
Well, I remember you saying, you told me that, so. I tell you what I did, I sent him something back today, and I said, would somewhere in the range of $250 to $500 be fair for, you know, their expenses of whatever they got to do and everything? And so I just, I may, kind of threw that out there, starting at the low number, and then he hadn't responded back to me yet as of this meeting, so I just kind of threw that out there. And I'll ask him, they'll do it for nothing, but I did offer a little something. And if y'all are not satisfied with what he comes back with, we can still look at the UALR thing, if that's what, but I do need you to authorize us to do something, you set a cap on it if you want to, or however you want to do it. I'll try to get you the best deal I can get you.
I move that we continue with the communications services study from Dr. McKee, with a price no more than $500.
Second.
Okay, motion's made and seconded, if there are any question or discussion? All in favor, show of hands. I see six in favor, thank you all.
Okay, so the second thing that we looked at was the gun ordinance in the city limits of Warren, it hadn't been looked at for a few years, so we went in, and the committee looked at it and made some changes, and so it's in your packet, if you want to take a minute and look over that.
Posed ordinance 948.
I move that we place ordinance number 948 on its first reading.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded, posed ordinance 948 be placed on its first reading. Is there any question or discussion to that motion?
How do you feel about this, chief?
Anybody else, any question, or, this is for first reading. All in favor, show of hands. I see six in favor, read the ordinance. Posed ordinance 948, ordinance to amend ordinance number 192 to prohibit discharging firearms within the corporate city limits of Warren, Arkansas, and for other purposes. Now therefore be it ordained by the city council of Warren, Arkansas, ordinance number 192 is amended as follows. Section 6, it shall be unlawful within the city of Warren, Arkansas, for any person to discharge any firearm. For purposes of this ordinance, firearm means any device designed, made, or adapted to expel a projectile by the action of an explosive or any device readily convertible to that use, including such a device that is not loaded or lacks a clip or other component to render it immediately operable, and components that can be easily, that can be readily be assembled into such a device. The penalty for violation of section 6 of this order shall be upon conviction be not less than $100, nor more than $500 for each violation. Exceptions to this ordinance include the following. Any certified law enforcement officer while in the performance of his or her duties. Citizens while in the lawful protection of themselves or another as provided in the statutes of the state of Arkansas. Animal control officers of the city while in the performance of their duties. Duly formed and organized gun or rifle clubs while at a designated firing range provided the construction of the range facility has been approved by the city as meeting current safety standards applicable to such facilities, and all applicable zoning and building regulations have been met for the facility's construction. And the last item, devices designed and used for the construction trade, such as nail set devices, provided such construction devices are used exclusively for their intended purpose.
Move that we suspend the rules and place ordinance number 948 on its second reading.
Second. Motion's made and seconded, suspend the rules, place 948 on second reading. Any question or discussion? All in favor, show of hands. See six in favor, that's unanimous. Posed ordinance 948, ordinance to amend ordinance number 192 to prohibit discharging firearms within the corporate city limits of Warren, Arkansas, and for other purposes.
I move that we suspend the rules and place ordinance number 948 on its third and final reading.
Second. Motion second made, to suspend the rules for third reading, proposed ordinance 948. Question or discussion? All in favor, show of hands. I see six in favor.
I move that we adopt ordinance number 948.
Okay. I think I was supposed to have read that title one more time, but let me do that right quick, and then I'll take that. Ordinance to amend ordinance number 192 to prohibit discharging firearms within the corporate city limits of Warren, Arkansas, for other purposes. Now, I'll take that motion.
Move that we adopt, this is a cloud over here.
I'm sorry. We got a second? Okay, got the second, Alderman, total three. Motion made and seconded, to adopt proposed ordinance 948. Any final discussion or question? Ordinance to amend ordinance number one, no, I don't have to do that again there, you got me messed up, that was the last. All in favor of adoption, show of hands. I see six in favor, thank you.
And there is no emergency, I can't believe that.
All right, go ahead, Alderman.
Okay, so the third item we discussed was the dog shelter expansion. We discussed that there are 30 states in the United States that currently have a time period for the euthanasia of dogs. Arkansas is one that doesn't. So every city is, sets their own ordinance. And I looked around at the cities close to us, some of them, they keep dogs 30 days, that's the maximums. So we decided as a committee that we would bring to you that a minimum, once a dog enters the dog pound, a minimum of five days, with a maximum of 21 days. And the reason we discussed this is, we've been paying the city, you can help me, Mr. Mayor, last month, like $1,500 to board dogs at the.
Yes, ma'am, every bit of that.
So we discussed that instead of adding to the animal shelter, to try this, to see if it would free up room before we put more money into it for the dogs. Like, and if that doesn't solve, we've got to get the dogs off the street. So if we use the policy, a minimum of five days, maximum of 21, and that still doesn't solve the dog overcrowding at the shelter, then we will look at adding on to the facility.
Is that your motion?
Well, I'll make, I just want to see, y'all have any discussion, y'all have any?
Was the committee vote unanimous?
Yes, ma'am.
What's the adoption price?
I don't even know. I don't think it's, I don't think it's anything. I think it's free. And we have dogs that have been out there more than a year.
Yeah, it's like y'all.
Mm-hmm. I think, but like I said, we've had dogs that have been there for over a year. Feeding, you know, and so, and the more, like today, I mean, there are dogs all over Warren, I know the dog catcher constantly gets caught, Sean can, constant. So, and we talked about, you know, the 21 days, to me, if somebody's not, we never want to put somebody's pet down, but if you're not, if you don't know your dog is missing within 21 days, what, are you a responsible owner anyway? what, are you a responsible owner anyway? So, so I move that we adopt the policy of minimum of five days once a dog enters the pound, up to a maximum of twenty-one before using euthanasia.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion and second. Now what this means, Ashes, we bring back a proposed ordinance with this language in it for you. But that tells us what to do and then we go from there. Any question or discussion on the motion? All in favor, show of hands. I see six in favor. That passes. Okay, I think you have one more item.
One more? We were busy. So the last one is, um, we need a new animal control truck. The one that is in current use, has over two hundred thousand miles. And you know they're hard miles because they're all city miles. So, um, Chief Hildreth is going to look for a used truck to get one before this one goes out. Because we don't need to be without a dog, animal control truck. Not just a dog, but animal control, period.
So your motion is?
My motion, my move that we purchase a used truck for animal control.
Second. I was thinking second.
It was a second?
Second.
Okay, second over here. All right, motion second that the administration be authorized to try to find, I guess, the best used vehicle we can find uh, that would be suitable to the animal control section of the police department. Any question or discussion on that motion?
We have a cap on the price?
That's what I was thinking.
Okay, my bad.
Well, you certainly can do that.
I'm going to check up on you, cargo ships around town. Have a good, get those forward. And then we just bring them twice.
Yeah.
Because the mayor met you guys and approved the purchase of it.
Because that could be done in a call, can't it?
That, or we might, it may take us to next council. But you can do it anyway.
Right. We know it won't be a new truck, but-
Right.
Used vehicles are-
So, so the motion, the motion would be that we try to find one and bring back a proposal to the council.
We can find one, we possess.
Is that correct on the motion and second?
Yes, yes, sir.
Any other discussion or question?
And that's all I got for you.
All right, let's, let's vote on this. Uh, all those in favor, show of hands. Six in favor. Thank you, thank you, uh, Councilmember Burton Fraser. We appreciate it. Y'all have been busy. Fire chief, thanks, chief. Fire chief, uh, your monthly report's there.
Good evening. Warren Fire Department, front of the grill, saw during the month of May, two were coming up to the entire department. I had our regular monthly meeting on May first, nineteen members present. Our total volunteer payroll for the month was nine hundred and forty-one dollars fifty cents. Uh, at our regular meeting, we discussed the two, well, not those two calls, the freebie calls for the month of April. And then we did see our first day recertification. And then as most of you know, we've been assisting with the demolition of these buildings uptown. Now at the Bryant Building, kind of keep that tile wet. That's part of the process, make sure it doesn't get dusty. And going up there, and when the day it doesn't rain, we go for a class A spray it down, keep it wet. That's part of the D E Q bill, so.
Anybody got any questions? Yes, ma'am.
The nineteen members, are you representing volunteer firefighters that was present?
Yes, ma'am, that was nineteen, that was thirty.
Okay.
And that was for what month?
That was May ninth. Yeah, that was May sixth.
Well, mine says May first.
Mine's got May second.
Mine has first.
Mine has first.
Oh.
Mine says second too.
No, 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 no.
Well, you're looking training.
Training.
Twelve calls, May second. Yeah, so it was May first.
Right, 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 right.
Now you're correct. Two different things there, yeah. Two different things. Chief, uh, one thing I did want to ask, and I didn't mean to ask this, so I'll just do it now. Are we still billing the insurance companies where they have policies that will-
The last two we paid that didn't have insurance.
Okay. I, I think that needs to be on your report. That, you know, that what we did, what we tended to be, they didn't pay it, or the ones, or they did. So we can know that information. Uh, I think that'd be appropriate.
Well, you should have that on the, you should have-
I think it made it, used to be on the report.
I don't know that we had a, you know, a billable. Because the fire that we've had for the last five months, I don't think we've had a billable. I mean, we hadn't had, they hadn't had insurance up front paid.
Okay, we still need your report, is what I'm saying, okay?
Okay. Who did your CPR?
Kathy Hall, from, she worked out, too. I think she does what to-
Was there a cost for it?
Ma'am?
Was there a cost?
Yes, it was. I can't remember what-
I don't need to know, I was just-
Yes, ma'am, it was a small, you know, just a process and fee for the card and all that stuff. But I can't remember what the, okay, if it actually was.
Any other questions? Okay, Mr. Toll Free, go.
None at this time.
Okay, thank you. I thank you. Uh, sanitation manager, Johnson, who wears two hats. We'll start with sanitation. Solid waste. You need to report to him.
Uh, the new truck's doing a great job. Uh, no problem with it so far. All the equipment's up and running, uh, except for the junk truck. It's in the shop along with the trailer getting it repaired. Maybe one day this week, we'll be back picking up the junk on a normal basis. We did it last week on, in the trash truck itself. It worked out okay, but it's not made the haul of junk. Uh, but all in all, everything, everything's working good. And crew's doing a great job as usual.
Anybody have any questions about solid waste? All right. Uh, sanitation committee, Councilmember Atkins. I know we just kind of started a discussion on things, but more to be done. But anything you want to report?
No, we didn't need a touch base from Mr. Johnson and we had none of the assistance.
Okay, thank you.
One thing I'd like to say is remind everybody, and we talked about it, is the agenda. Trash will run on-
The nineteenth?
Nineteenth.
Yeah, every, every holiday, that's where it runs.
That's one that we said, remind people.
And, and just so everybody knows, uh, council, you probably do, but, uh, our, of course, personnel policy sets our holidays and everything. And the employees unanimously ask if they could go ahead and work on that date because it gets so far behind and so, just makes it hard on them afterwards. Now they do get paid extra. You know, for, because that they technically have a holiday coming, which they would get paid for anyways.
I know people on the Monday route appreciate it.
Yeah.
Because it seems like it's all, you know, every Monday.
And I just want everybody to know how that's working, so. Okay, very good, good, good point. All right, uh, put on your building code hat and let's talk about that now.
Tennessee up on the elementary school, which in my opinion is a well-built building. And also a very nice building. We did a final inspection on it, fire chief and myself. Uh, we've made the certificate of occupancy for them. Hasn't been delivered yet, but it will be. There were some small infractions, uh, they'll be taken care of with, with no problem. Having quite a few, back to having a few, uh, solar, solar installations in town which contributes to some of the building permits. Uh, not recognized till on this month, but we, well, in May, but we've had a few pop up in June that will show up next, next month. All in all, uh, we've been doing inspections on a couple of new construction jobs going on. One on West Church and, uh, another one, uh, south of, south of town. It's on the rural part of the water system that I inspect. Any questions, I'll be more than happy to discuss. We've had a few properties that we're trying to get cleaned up and making progress on, uh, none yet to condemn. But any questions, I'd be willing to talk. If anybody needs to know or wants to know anything.
What about the, um, Bryant Building?
Uh, we have-
What dates on that of-
We have structural engineer down today. Uh, his recommendation, uh, we have not yet got back yet. Although he did say he advised us to go ahead and continue to take the wall down. That's on the south side of the church that's next to the Bryant Building. And then, uh-
By hand?
By hand, and then to photograph and take notes of the shape of the building that it's in. And if we decided that it was safe enough to remove the debris at the Bryant Building that, to go, to go forward because there's no connection with the two buildings. He didn't feel like, if we took our time and was very careful about it, he didn't feel like there would be a problem. But I can't say anything about the other building until I get his report. He, there is a problem with it having been noted in, in writing, so.
Okay, and you're in constant contact with the owners of the-
Uh, well, not constant, but they know what's going on. Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am. As a matter of fact, they were there today at the, at the inspection. And the guy says he'll have everything back to us within two days.
Okay, any other questions?
Uh, it was Ben Greenwood called you right over on Martin Street. It locked across the street from where it's growed up, right there. Could you look at that, folks?
Across from Hurt?
Yeah, that's growed up. I think Martin Nichols used to own it, he sold it.
Did he sell it? Yeah, I thought he- I know he had it cleaned up and piled up.
Yeah, it's still grew, it's still grew up. And then they're locked down on South Murphy, across from the old temple. Temple, uh, grocery right there, some blue house right there, just kind of just grew all the way up. Right on South Murphy.
Okay, you're in south of, of Murphy Street, Trade Park, or?
North of.
North of.
Yeah, if you go down through, you can't miss the zone right inside.
Oh, on the right side, okay. All right, north, on South Murphy.
Yeah.
Now, I'm surprised they haven't done it.
Shoot me out of the store the other day.
Uh, Mr. Johnson, do we have anything to present to the council as far as anything that needs to be ordered, cleaned up at this point?
Not at this time. I'm working with, with several people and it's a slow program. Just trying to keep everybody together. And, uh, there were some properties that were, brought to my attention, uh, that, that are, that are being taken care of. So I don't, I don't see at this time, any of them. There's a few that could be because the timeframe's up. But I'm working with the, I'm working with the owners and, uh, it, it's going forward. I don't, I don't think we need to do anything right now to some of these. Maybe just about next month or May, I don't, we do need to look at it, but.
You have any, uh, they're on the West Pine?
Uh, West Pine, which one?
Oh, that's, that's our-
Oh, okay, you're talking about Al.
Yes, yeah.
Through James, uh, no, I talked to one of the daughters of John Henry, which originally owned the property, uh, there in Rosegate. And my understanding is you've got to have an owner to serve the papers to. The mayor and I are planning on probably next week getting in touch with attorney at the municipal league. And because we're the one that wrote the rules of, of, of what we can do. And see, we've never had this happen before, or at least since I appeared first, I don't understand.
It's, it's how we have, who do we con?
Right.
To give notice to.
I just want people to-
That's the issue.
To know that it's being addressed.
It is every day. And, 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 uh, it, it's, and I hate it. It's, it's a sad situation. Uh, and, and the whole town's feeling it because they're picking up stuff all over town and taking it out there. Uh, at one, two, three o'clock in the morning, uh, six thirty, when I left the house this morning, going to town, he was going back out there on his lawn mower with the trailer bike. And, and there's more junk. But it is, it's a process we got to go through.
Right.
And hopefully, uh, hopefully we'll get some clarification next week whenever we talk to the municipal league attorney and, and, uh, go from there.
Okay.
We, we really got two different problems.
Right.
Both of them. One of them's a, uh, law enforcement issues that we're going, got to deal with, but also the actual property. And I just want to say for the record that we understand it's not good and I don't blame people for being upset about it. And we've got to try to do something about it. Whatever we can legally do, we got to try. It says bad. It really is. Okay, anything else? Okay, thank you. Street foreman, Mr. Hearnsberger.
Good evening.
Evening.
Uh, we've done a lot of boot shopping. In fact, I've put a plant, trading plant, done, spent a lot of time cleaning up, getting ready for the Pink tomato festival. Just doing what we can do. Got all like that.
We are still working individual complaints throughout town. Some of them getting a little, little old. And, uh, the first burger been talking about that because we go over them every week. He's trying to get to everything that he can. Of course, this last couple of weeks, as he said, is just about had more than we could do. But we, we trying to, we've worked a lot of hours, old crew did. But we're going to try to get back on some of those other issues and try to address them. We got a good bit of drainage work to do. It's not even called in stuff, just streets that we need, we know we need to, to deal with as well as all the plumbing issues, which can be sometimes small and sometimes big. Any questions from anybody? Or comments? Okay, thank you, Monty. Street committee, uh, Alderman Mosley. We've got a few things there on the agenda.
Yes, we had had requests for commercial parking signs. Um, I just had, at South Murphy.
Yes.
The, uh, committee voted not to do that. It is a public street and we decided against putting a reserved parking place sign.
For individual businesses.
Yeah, for, for an individual business, right. So do-
I, I think, yeah, we need to vote on that.
Vote on it, okay. I move that we do not place the signs on most streets.
Do not set a policy of doing that, okay?
Policy to do that, yes, thank you.
Second.
Motion second made and second. Is there any discussion from the council? I know y'all have had this for a couple of months, looking at it and trying to decide what's best. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, show of hands. I see six, is it six? Am I correct? Okay, I'm sorry, I'll make sure six in favor. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, the next one was, uh, parking on streets, that has been tabled because we're still gathering streets where we should not have the parking, to prohibit parking on the streets. So that's been tabled for now. Street paving, I have all my streets that we're in the process of measuring and getting our tonnage together to submit a bid.
So are you ready to present the streets tonight, or you're not ready to do that?
Need to get a measure.
Okay, get some more estimates and what have you.
Have a full package.
Okay.
Uh, we need to replace a truck. Monty's truck, not Monty's, one that he drives. The one that carries the people back and forth to work, the way they get to the different jobs is pretty well gone. It's just, it's not, you cannot repair it. And the committee, we got together and we want to request that we get a three-quarter crew cab truck, three-quarter ton crew cab to replace that and do it through the rescue lines. But now, is there anything that you could add to that?
Could I make a suggestion to the council? I know the committees met and, and talked about this. And, and I know with the, probably the agenda meeting, there were some discussions made that maybe this wasn't the best way to do it or go about it, and I understand that. I talked with, uh, with Monty- I talked with, uh, with Monty, uh, Mr. Hearn's Burger, and also Mr. Johnson in the sanitation department because we, we do need some more equipment to, to help us in a faster manner and on all of our city streets be able to, uh, pick up large volumes of not only junk, but the limbs and things that from time to time we have to do, just on a regular basis, notwithstanding the, um, uh, emergency situations when things happen. I've got, and the council, you have received this, we're certainly not asking you to do anything about it tonight, but I would like to present this to the sanitation department. And I know you're talking about a street truck here, could somebody hand, Monty, would you hand everybody one of these since you're right there? I think there's enough, make sure every one of them gets one. It's, it's a proposal and, and we've kind of talked about this together with the street foreman and, and, uh, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you.
And, uh, giving you some idea of what we're talking about, there's even pictures there of what we're discussing. Of course, this would be bid out, but nevertheless, give you some idea. So in effect, what we're recommending after further discussion and even after the committee met, we appreciate y'all's consideration and we do need to get another pickup truck for the, the street department. But we would ask if maybe you do not move forward with the recommendation that y'all came up with. I'm not trying to pull the rug out from under you, but we just think this may make more sense after further consideration. And let us, in the future, next few months, take a look at, uh, at this for the sanitation department, but it would also be beneficial to the street department at times. And then ask you to just consider giving us the authority to either bid out that's just a, a half-ton club cab truck, kind of like what we've got that's wore out, either bid out on state contract or go get one on state contract, or try to find a used one, that's an option too. We desperately need to get something done for the street department. Uh, I mean, they should, it, it's a problem, but rather than pay the estimated seventy thousand dollars for the other sized truck, uh, which would have been beneficial now, no question about that, but we think that the two department heads have, have talked and talked with me and after we kind of dug into it further, that this might be the smartest thing to do, most cost-effective and most beneficial to the city. And again, you've got plenty of time to, to talk about this, this one that we've just handed the information out on, which I'd like the sanitation committee to, to take up and consider. And then just ask if y'all would give us your direction on what you would be allow us to do on getting another truck, just a regular truck. And Mr. Uh, Hearn's Burger, we've estimated if you get a new one, probably.
New one, uh, estimated around forty-five thousand.
And maybe a good used one if you can find it after.
Somewhere around forty, thirty-five to forty thousand.
So, in essence, you wouldn't need the one that was gonna pull the trailer if we go this way, you just need a, a regular pickup truck.
Right, it's a regular crew cab pickup truck.
Okay.
Uh, half-ton pickup would do what we need to do. I, I've just got to have some way with my crew back and forth to the individual job site.
Okay.
Trying to replace a truck that's, uh, currently not running. It's a two thousand two model truck, the last time we were, uh, able to look at the old armor reading had two hundred and nine thousand miles on it and that will be somewhere around sixteen to eighteen months ago, the last time we've ever read it.
Bottom line is, and the committee, the street committee's done heard all this, bottom line is, we were trying to keep it wired together and running, you know, for the rest of the year, it was not anything budgeted for a new truck and, uh, you know, I can't answer that question other than just back at this what's happened and we, we need to give them something. And I, we're willing to do whatever y'all see fit, uh, either used or new, and, uh, go from there and then consider this later. Any questions or anything?
But you're saying a new truck, forty-five, more than likely a used truck would be in the forty.
Forty.
Well, we, we don't know. I guess a, a good one, a good one that's, that'll last a while is gonna be, you know, trucks are just expensive, even a used one.
Well.
But we, it'd be a little cheaper than a new one, I think.
You get a new truck though, you get more factor normal.
That's true too.
That you do not get on a used one, so.
But he's a dire stray, so we need to get, we need to get very quickly too, right?
That's correct. And as, as, uh, I've been talking to, uh, a couple that down on the state contract, uh, there will be some Ford available soon, he could not give me a, a timeline, but he just said soon. Uh, if I was to order a Dodge, I cannot order a Dodge today, it would be June of twenty twenty-four before I could even order a Dodge pickup. New. So if we get, if we, y'all do go ahead and, and, uh, give us okay to purchase a vehicle, we, we're gonna need to act on it quick because pickups are in high demand and dealers is not gonna let us sit there on their lot waiting on it.
I, I think the thing about was is, is the finance was the question, wasn't it?
Yeah.
I was going to finance. Well, that's, if I could address that, I mean, I know the recommendation was to use some of the unappropriated, uh, rescue money, but know there were some concerns about doing that and I appreciate that. Uh, you know, we got, we got enough money to do it, we just had to take it out of our, you know, cash balances. I mean, that's just, that's what you'd have to do.
I move that we do a state bid on a new truck, a half-ton truck.
That's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second? Uh, on. All right, question or discussion on the motion? Not trying to ram this through on y'all, uh, whatever y'all see fit to do, but we need to do something. It just more, either that or we're gonna spend a ton of money on that other truck that I think's a waste. But I'm, I'm open to y'all's suggestions, whatever you think. Monty's been very reasonable about this and he'll just, just need some transportation to get his people where they need to go. He's not trying to, you know, buy a Cadillac or nothing like that, he's just trying to get something that we can depend on for a while. Any question or discussion of the motion? What the price range was looking at? Well, the first proposal was quite back, yeah, for a, for a new one, yeah. We think something in that range.
This is for Ford?
Yeah.
Big Ford?
Ford.
No, man.
Not half.
No, no.
All right, I don't want to belabor it, but have y'all ready to vote? Okay, all in favor, show of hands. I see six in favor, thank you very much, and I, I appreciate y'all's concerns and, and, you know, what we need to do here, so. That makes sense, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, uh, I believe that's it for street committee. Alderman Marshall, and you, I know y'all are planning to meet later, not today, but later, so you got anything you want to report tonight?
Not tonight, we will have a meeting tomorrow at five o'clock.
Okay, and we do have some information for you on some of these matters.
Okay.
Thank you, uh, Ways and Means, Alderman Henderson, Chairperson Henderson.
All right, thank you, Mayor. The Ways and Means Committee met on May thirty-first at five o'clock here in the municipal courtroom. Our agenda consisted of the assistant request of two dollars for the assistant treasurer, the solar power plan, the American Rescue Funds, ten-year bonuses, and number five, the old street department, uh, building. If you would just, uh, update your agenda to reflect what our committee consisted of, and it was those five, uh, items. The first, uh, item, the assistant to the treasurer, as you are aware.
Excuse me, Alderman Henderson, that, that's even misstated on the agenda, it's supposed to be assistant to the city clerk. I apologize about that, but, uh, and, and the treasurer is included, it's the city assistant to the city clerk.
Well, on my agenda, it said treasurer and then listed here on, on my agenda.
It says same thing on mine, but it's supposed to say, but I just pulled that out.
Anyway, we went back, uh, to the review that we had in twenty twenty-two when we were working on the, uh, on the budget where we reviewed, uh, each employee's salary. And for that position for now assistant to the clerk and stuff, uh, we are recommending that the two dollar an hour, uh, increase be given due to the fact that an additional functional duty of the administration to the website would be added, uh, to that, uh, individual's, uh, job. So I move that the two dollars for the assistant to the clerk be approved.
Second.
All right, uh, you guys are close every time, I think Alderman Mosley got it in there. But anyway, got two seconds, any question or discussion? All in favor, show of hands, please, I see six in favor, thank you.
Okay, the second item that we, uh, discussed was the solar power plan. And if you'll recall, uh, we asked that the next meeting or any time that we met as it related to solar, that the full council would come together as a committee as a whole. We are still waiting on additional, uh, information as it relates to the proposal. And when we receive that information, we will schedule a meeting with the council as a whole. Number three was the American Rescue Funds, uh, the amount that we received that was emailed, uh, corresponds with what we, uh, had when we closed out in twenty twenty-two. So you have, uh, that information that actually was emailed, uh, to us, uh, on April the twenty-eighth at nine twenty, uh, AM. The tenure bonus, we did discuss and we felt that, uh, since we have, uh, tenured employees, uh, since our employees' salaries are still, uh, low, that we would increase, uh, that pay, the tenure pay for twenty-year employees, we have four, and going from six hundred to, uh, eight hundred dollars, would give a total of three thousand two hundred. Uh, fifteen-year and over employees, we have two at six hundred dollars. Ten-year employees, uh, we have one and that amount of the tenure is five hundred dollars. And for the, uh, five-year and over, we have nine employees, uh, at four hundred dollars. And if you will look, uh, on the second sheet, you, uh, we always include the FICA and the retirement and the total is ten thousand four hundred fifty-two dollars and forty-five cents. I move that the tenure pay for our said employees, uh, be approved by the council. Second.
Okay, motion's made, seconded, approve the tenure bonuses. Question or discussion? All in favor, show of hands. I see six in favor, I hope I counted right. Okay, that's approved, go ahead.
Okay, and then the, uh, fifth item that I mentioned when I gave you the overview of our agenda was the old street department, uh, building. I move that the city put out for bids the cost of renovation of that, uh, building. Second.
Okay, now, what, what all do you want included in that renovate, the roof?
The roof number one and then, uh, painting, uh, on the inside.
Okay, okay, all right, got that. Motion's made, seconded, we bid that out, is there any question or discussion? Uh, if I might, just for, so we're all on the same page on that, uh, we've been doing some checking on some estimated prices. We've, of course, bid it out as you're instructing us to do, but we're gonna propose that when we put a roof, a new roof on it, that we put a pitched roof on it, not another, not just cover up that flat roof because I think long-term would be better off, so is well. Is that okay, that we bid it out that way?
Yes.
Just want to be clear on that, okay?
Yes, and, and of, of course, you know, when I said paint up, fix up, the, the restroom needs, uh, some attention and then we need to look at, uh, some type of, I'm not sure what kind of air, but some kind of air.
Okay, got you. All right, is any question or discussion of that motion? All in favor, show of hands. I see six in favor.
And then under other business, uh, when we looked at the assistant clerk, we thought treasurer, uh, position, uh, we overlooked, uh, the, uh, pool manager, uh, that salary has been four thousand dollars since the beginning of it. So we did ask that, uh, the administration, uh, check with other cities just to see what those salaries were. We did receive, uh, some information, but I don't think the specs or the functional duties were the same. But when our committee comes together, we will look at that and report back, uh, to you. And that, uh, ends my report, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am, appreciate your committee and your, uh, presentation as always. Uh, reports, businesses, boards, and commissions. And that starts with Parks and, uh, Rick, Mr. Kyle Wagon, are you still here?
I drug him away from baseball going on out there to make sure he showed up by himself. Uh, everything's going pretty good, we've, uh, got a report. Had some attention brought to us about the outdoor workout equipment at the park and I've got, got a guy going, we got some handles rusted off and some things down there and they're, uh, getting all that cut and ready to weld those back and get all that going. And we've had, this week, well, carried on from last week, uh, two outside units at the senior citizen place on Edgar Street. They're air, sure they're air conditioning units, one of them. So we'll kind of get some prices on those and, uh, you'll probably be seeing that in your report next one, it'll probably be a pretty good deal. Two of the threes went out and they're better to get by with a third one. The pool's opened up, we've got some of the bathroom remodeling done, uh, new showers, new toilets, hot water. Side of that, we're, no, nobody's dealing with this, we're, we're doing good on our.
We've had about forty a day.
That's terrific.
Great.
I think that's probably up considerably than what we've had in the past, isn't it? Good. Yes, sir, you look like you want to say something.
Yeah, you can check that little bridge out over there, see the bridge down at the park.
Yes, sir, we've been passionate on that thing, I don't know, every other week they kick, we've got one camera that'll come by and kick the handrail with the old, you know, and stuff like that, but, I mean, I don't know what you can do, but we just keep replacing it.
But they talk, some elderly folks are talking about the flooring.
Yes, sir.
In it, yeah.
We're, we're actually, excuse me, we're, we're actually have been talking to, uh, some people about trying to get, you know, replace it, get a new bridge and then also put another one down on the east end of the creek down there. We like to have a, you know, two of it tie, ties in, but of course, that's the immediate one because it is, as, uh, Alderman Tofree says, it does need to be replaced. And we, we've been talking to some people that are talking about either helping us with some financing to do it or some labor to do it, and we're trying to get that worked out, but it's so noted, you're correct, it needs, needs some attention.
Speaking of labor, is there somebody that regularly, um, maintains it, like pick up the trash?
Yes, ma'am, we, and then every, about every two or three weeks, I turn in to the mayor an inspection for the park. Just to, you know, update on what's tore up, what's fixed, what's being done, that way and say something happened.
Trying to make sure all the playground equipment is safe, you know, not a broken chain or something. Uh, they take a pretty good beating down there and unfortunately sometime it's kids a little bit older than ought to be on some of that equipment that's on it, but we're trying, we're trying to watch it.
But the problem needs to be removed, it's just like almost that.
Cause, yeah, yeah, that's down in concrete, that's, we're gonna have some machine down there, we can't, until it dries up to get something over there to get that up.
Any other questions for the Parks and Rec director? Parks being used, I can tell you that. That's for sure, okay. We, we're gone in a minute, we're gonna do something else about recreation, but y'all just bear with us just a second here. Uh, planning commission, uh, has. Planning commission has not met. Although a couple of things we're gonna ask them to reconsider, they're listed there, but they haven't met yet. Aviation commission, not since our last meeting. Water and sewer, you have the meeting of the last commission meeting, and you have their financial report from the last meeting. And of course, there's been a lot of new well work going on, I think y'all may know that, but new wells being installed out at the industrial park, and then the one there in the city park on Martha Street, there's a well back there in the back, kind of back part of it, as one we had some major problems with two months back, and they've had to do some pretty major repairs on that, but I think that one's fixed, and the new one is making good progress. So, well, we ought to be in good shape there, but I know it's costing an awful lot of money. All right, housing authority, you do have their monthly report, it is submitted there for your review. Cultural center, that's just the usage report. Alman Berks Fraser, is there anything? I mean, we're still waiting on our architect to kind of finalize, and a couple of other tests we want to do, especially on the sewer lines, and it's been so wet out there, but we're gonna try to get that done so we can try to, you know, at least know exactly what we've got to try to do with the place.
After we get that in sanction, then we'll, we'll know more.
Real, real talk here. Okay, unfinished business, nothing listed. The new business, we're gonna be applying for a recreational grant. And this is, and we want to apply for the, for the pool, to do some more, basically to fix the pool where council knows there's been a lot of things need to be fixed out there. Alman Berks Fraser, you want to make any comment? We're talking about new lining for the pool, we're talking about, what, filters or some things that?
We, we just, we have a leak in the pool, and it needs to be fixed. So we talked about, like Moncellus City Pool did a few years ago, they just got a lining put in. There's no way we could ever get a pool, and Kyle can talk, how much con, we'll never get the concrete amount built, now they use gunite, that pool will be here forever. So we just looked at, like, we want to look at a lining, and then the filtration system has been there since 1972. Some of the, the, the filters have been replaced, and then Kyle, with a little help from me, replaced the sand, and that's a job in itself this year. So we're looking at just updating the filtration system.
And our estimate is?
I would say a re-
Fifty?
I would say fifty.
Technically, I'm supposed to say we're having a public hearing right now, so let me, let me do that. I think that'll be part of the report, the public hearing. Is there any want, council members included, anybody here that wants to talk about this? Wants to make any kind of recommendation, any suggestion? Now, we comply for a lot of different things. Recreation, outdoor recreation, but administratively, we feel like this is the most serious thing that we need right now. Kyle, you agree with that?
Yes, sir. And what, what it's gonna do, and it's not gonna be a cosmetic thing, is what I just want people to know, it's gonna be, and since we're grandfathered in on a lot of this stuff, when we go to change it, it has to all be changed. So, so it's not gonna physically look a lot different to just driving by, but it'll be 100% working correctly, and it'll be a lot cost effective. I mean, we're looking, the leak, we're losing water, just, you know, it's everyday deal, and I know the water department, you know, they're really good with us, working with us.
They very much support this too, because they say we got volumes of water getting out of that plant.
This is gonna take most of that money to, to get it right.
And it's from, the, the leak, what we, best can, is from the pool to the, what we call the pit. So if we fix that, then we're no longer grandfathered in for everything. Once we start, like Kyle said, we have to do it.
We got Mr. Ricky Works here with the Economic Development District in Pine Bluff. Of course, we're part of that, as y'all all know. Ricky, you got anything? He's helping us with the application process. And of course, we're gonna be looking at some more grants too, but this is just, this is the outdoor program. Thing you want to just add?
I think you've pretty well covered it all. This is a, what outdoor parks and recreation call the fund grant. It's up to 100,000 dollars, and it's a non-matching grant.
Now, we got, we got two options.
We, we assure you, we have-
We got, we got two options. Let's, let me explain this to the council. We got two options, and we comply for both of them, although I'm gonna tell you, you're not gonna get both of them, but one of them is the normal, regular program that is a 50-50 match. You correct me if I'm wrong, Ricky. In other words, you apply for, you figure out what your total project's gonna be, and you apply for it, and if they approve it, then they'll pay half of it. That's what it amounts to. The other one, which we didn't used to be eligible for because of the size of the town, we changed the rules, it's called the fund grant. Now, here's, here's the dilemma we kind of face. As he said, is 100% non-matching grant, up to 100,000 dollars, which would be wonderful. We could do a lot of things. Lot more competition to that one, probably a lot less chance of getting that funded, but we could try. Am I saying that right?
You're right. There are a couple of things that would benefit the city, extra points on the grant. One of them is you've never applied for a fund grant because you wasn't eligible. Now you are eligible, you get extra points for never having a grant, or at least not having a grant in the last five to 10 years. So you would get the extra point for that, but there's not as much money in that particular grant, so it is a lot more competitive.
In other words, your odds are maybe not as good of getting that funded. Not saying you wouldn't.
Can you apply for both?
Yes, ma'am, and that's what we, good question. That's exactly what we, I've got a resolution that would authorize us to do both, one for each one. You gotta do a separate resolution, and that's what I was gonna propose that y'all do once we're through with this public hearing. And then probably get with the staffs up there, maybe we just submit it for both of them, and I guess we can do that.
I think we can do that.
And then just see if they'll fund, they're not gonna fund them both, but they might fund one.
First of all, I think we need the cost estimate to see, that could determine which one we go after. But we can talk, I'll talk to the Parks and Recreation Department and see if they have any ideas on, you know, which one we'd, we'd have a better chance at.
The best way to get grants funded is apply for what those folks want to award. And if we can do that, I think we got a case here for ourselves, no question about that is what we need. Just question is the best route to go about trying to get it. So, anyway, we'll, we'll, anybody else, any other, any public comment, anybody that wants to say anything? We got a lot of recreational needs now, we do. We got a lot of things at the baseball complex, we got a lot of things that we need to do at the city park, no question about any of that, but we believe this is, from the administration, and I think listening to the council, y'all agree that this is our top priority. Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, this is the grant that Patricia mentioned, the outdoor parks grant, and then the other one was the blue and yellow.
And they have brought me some information about that one too, for us to dig into, yes.
I move that we close the public hearing.
Second. Okay. Question or discussion? All in favor, show of hands. Public hearing is closed. Thank you for all your comments. We've got proposed Resolution 8683. This is gonna be the first one, I'm gonna read it, and then see if you will see fit to act on it. Whereas Warren, Arkansas recognized need to provide public recreational facilities for its local citizens and visitors, whereas the city wishes to apply for 50-50 parks grant funds through the Arkansas Department of Parks, Heritage and Tourism to develop public park following location Warren, Arkansas. Whereas the mayor and city council understands that if granted funds for park development, they must provide land by lease for ownership on which to develop park facilities. Whereas, as Warren, Arkansas will sign a contract agreeing to provide the necessary resources to maintain this park and facilities for a period of 25 years. Now therefore, be it resolved by the city council of Warren, Arkansas hereby authorizes the mayor's submitting application for grant funding to Arkansas Department of Parks, Heritage and Tourism to develop a public park. Of course, that is the pool we're talking about.
I move that we adopt Resolution 8683.
Second. Motion made, second. Any question or discussion? All in favor, show of hands. Six in favor. The next one would be 8684. Whereas Warren, Arkansas recognized need to provide public recreational facilities for its local citizens and visitors, whereas the city wishes to apply for fun park grant funds through the Arkansas Department of Parks, Heritage and Tourism to develop a public park following location Warren, Arkansas. Whereas the mayor and the city council understands that granted funds for park development must provide land by lease or ownership on which to develop park facilities. Whereas, as Warren, Arkansas will sign a contract agreeing to provide the necessary resources to maintain this park and facilities for a period of 25 years. Now therefore, be it resolved, the city council of Warren, Arkansas hereby authorizes the mayor's submitting application for grant funding to the Arkansas Department of Parks, Heritage and Tourism to develop a public park.
Move that we adopt Resolution number 8684.
Second. Motion made, second. Any question or discussion?
Just discussions. Since it's, they're having a big turnover in that department right now, I, I think maybe if we can speed our part up, it, it may be beneficial to us.
We will try to get it in. There's a deadline on it anyway, isn't it?
Middle of August, I think, the 13th, 15th, whichever, Friday.
Really, all we need is the, is the estimate, you know, anyway. Okay, questions, any question, discussion? All in favor, show of hands. Six in favor. We'll give it our best shot.
Mayor, though we've already gone through the Resolution 8683, the date is incorrect on here.
Is it?
Says pass the 12th day of August instead of June.
Oh, so it does. That should say 12th day of June, 2023. Without objection, we'll just correct that, because that's, that's not right. Okay? Sorry about that.
You're in your money today.
Didn't catch it when I was reading it myself, looking over. We're not gonna wait that long.
I actually saw it, but I knew you weren't never gonna put this in the paper.
Well, y'all gonna have to tell me. I'm sorry, I, I didn't, I didn't catch it. I just knew we had the resolution right, and I didn't, didn't look at the date enough, so sorry about that. Thank you. New business, I M B is this proposed video proposal. You got a email, and just let me explain this real quick. I talked to these people by telephone. This is a company that does this for the National League of Cities. They are proposing to do one, it'd be a video promotional piece that we can use on our own website, that we can put out, that we can, and they'll come in and put it all, I mean, they'll do it locally, with video and pictures locally, and it could be used for industrial recruiting, be used for live base. There is no charge to the city warrant, and this is not anything like some of the stuff we've been involved in before, where they, you know, making a strategic plan or something like that. This is, this is strictly a promotional product, that's what it is. And they just simply want us to get, now, again, till it's all done, we get to prove it, the final version, we get to, you know, they can't do anything we don't want them to do, or put anything in it we don't want. So, and, and I don't even know, I mean, I, I might have just had the authority to say do it, since it's free, but I didn't think that was right. I thought I need to bring that to y'all and at least say it's okay with you to, to have this done. They're gonna get back with me if I find out there's something different here than what they told me. Had a long Zoom with them the other day, I'll, I'll certainly call it to your attention or call a halt to it. But I basically just want your permission to let us work with them to try to put together a free video presentation on Warren.
As I stated at the agenda meeting, the last experience that we had was not positive for Warren, but if this is one to be positive and promote us, I have no problem, but the last one that we had, where I believe it was ULR came down, the interviews from the public were not good. There was a meeting held over at the Culture Center, and there was, it was just not good. It was not positive.
I agree.
It was not positive at all.
Well, that was supposed to be some kind of, I don't know what else to call it, but strategic planning process, and that's not what this is.
But they too were going to promote us in a positive way, and when interviews were done with citizens and the meeting just really was not, was not positive at all. It was very negative as it relates to our-
Well, I, I will keep y'all informed as this progresses, and if we get to some point where something's not going the way, I understand y'all want it to go, be done, and we'll, you know, we'll take it up at that point. Are we willing to okay it at this point?
I'll, I'll move that we accept the plan with the stipulation that if it is not in the best interest for the city of Warren, that we terminate the meeting. Second.
Proper motion, that's seconded. Is that all? Berks Fraser, seconded?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Y'all swift on me some time. Question or discussion? All in favor, show of hands. I see six in favor. All right, announcements. The municipal league meeting is this week, 14th through 16th. I see, I'm going to attend some of it. I think the city clerk's gonna attend, and Teresa is gonna attend, and are some of y'all signed up? Oh, okay, some of y'all are signed up. Also, Charlotte and Linda upstairs are gonna go virtually and attend some of the work. They're doing that, a lot better job of that, so you can attend a lot of this stuff and not have to go up there now. So we're gonna be doing that. Municipal building will be closed Monday, June the 19th, and observing some, Juneteenth. Garbage will run, it's already been pointed out, and then before the next council meeting will be the July the 4th. Be the same situation there, city hall closed, but we will pick garbage up. Anybody got any announcements I may have forgotten or left off, just to let everybody know?
The tomato festival was a huge success for the committee. Awesome job. Thank you. It's going through that.
It, it looked different downtown, that's for sure, but-
More spread out.
Yeah, it was, but it, I think everything went pretty good, minus the one thunderstorm down for a little bit on Saturday afternoon, but-
Thursday evening too.
We paid bills.
Bills, motions to pay the bills for May. Hello, everybody.
I move that we pay May bills.
Second. I think I had a motion from Alman Henderson, seconded by Alman. If y'all are through, reading through the bills, all in favor, show of hands. I see six in favor.
Move that we're doing one.
So after you see where the new, the next meetings are, all in favor. See you later. And go home. Six in favor.